Mind your way.
You're fine.
It's like you can tell me, I don't know where we're going.
Okay, can everybody take their seats and settle down? I know there's still people who are coming in and want to speak, but we have quite a few people here tonight that I'm sure want to speak, so we need to get started. So, I officially hereby call this meeting to order. Could you all settle down and find your seats, please? Good evening and welcome to our monthly public hearing of the Court of Common Counsel. Thank you all for being with us here tonight. And for those of you listening and at home, just a few ground rules before we jump in. Please be reminded that as you come up to the podium and as we call you, please ensure that you give your name, address, for the record. And if you represent a group, please share the information of the said organization that you represent. We will be giving each person three minutes to speak. Assistant Majority Leader John Gale will be our timekeeper. Please be respectful of the three minutes of people's time. As you can see, we have quite a few people that are here tonight that want to speak. We have six different items on our agenda, so we're going to go through those. So I'm going to start calling up people by item by item. And as I call up people per item, I'm going to start with those who are in favor. And I'm going to call people and ask who is in favor of this item. And then I will go to who are opposed to this item. And I will go back and forth through that process as we get through the agenda. So, with that said, we're going to start with item number six, resolution authorizing the approval of bond issue for public finance authority for Zion Park Apartments solely for tax purposes. For those in favor of this item, please come up. Those in favor. Those opposed to this item, please come up. Opposed. One more time. Those in favor of item number six? Favor. Opposed. Opposed. Those who are in favor of item number six, the resolution authorizing the approval of bond issue for public finance authority for Zion Park Apartments solely for tax purposes. So those who are here to speak in favor of this item or against this item, please come up. Hearing none, we're going to move on to the next item, and that item is hereby closed. So going to item number one. Ordinance amending Chapter Two, Article Two of the Municipal Code of the City of Hartford be amended adding Section 2-48 and Section 2-49. This item, I should mention, is being referred to the Quality of Life and Public Safety Committee, which meets tomorrow at 5:30 here in the Council Chambers again. So there'll be another opportunity to engage in some discussion as well. So, item number one. Those in favor of item number one, please just come up and remember to state your name, address, and if you're representing the organization, the organization. Thank you.
My name is Bulong Bulong Romiz Hall of 535 Hillside Avenue. I'm in support of this ordinance. As we think about our increasing surveillance state across the United States, it's important, and I've said this before, that Hartford Police recognize that they operate within a larger system. They are not isolated, and these decisions are not happening in a vacuum. We must recognize the way surveillance, specifically in relationship to the black community, has been historically used with the idea that it's for the greater good. And the way surveillance is used on a national level with the narrative of safety for national security, specifically targeting immigrants and undocumented folk. It's said that these drones are intended to help predict crime. I ask how one might predict a crime is happening or in the location without making some general assumptions. What are some things that we might assume that crime has a specific look, a specific dress, a specific location? Which means that our officers are required to hold a certain level of bias, which they do. Unless Hartford Police are committed to and embody anti-bias, anti-racist, community policing model, where they take the lead from those in the community that they're serving, then I say we must regulate drones. We must set the standard of our expectations of our police. We must demand accountability and regulations. The assumption that I can make with the usage of these drones without regulation is that it will contribute to more incarceration of black and brown bodies. It will contribute to an increased lack of trust between the police in this community. After our police chief said he was committed to community policing and building trust with the community, I specifically want to uplift my undocumented siblings. We are a sanctuary city. Their quality of life and feeling safe and secure in Hartford should be paramount. In addition, I happened to go on policewon.com today and came across some really great articles to assist police in thinking about how they unroll usage of drones or unmanned aerial vehicles, or whatever they call them. Part of that consists of having community conversation. As I look around, I don't think I see anyone that I recognize from the police here. Nor do I see, oh, there's one. Or nor do I see our police chief. So it's important that if they're really committed to community policing and really committed to following the lead of our community, that they're here and that they listen to the voices of those in our community to know the best ways to move forward. Thank you.
Those opposed to item number one. So I'm going to go back and forth. So those opposed to item number one, please come forward.
Good evening. Donna Swar, H. Schulter's place. I'm combining one and three. I agree that technologies that are already, not already in use, and those that do not have protocols and procedures in place should come under review, and all grants or monies received should be approved by the City Council. Previous actions by the Hartford Police Department and/or Hartford Fire Department cannot be deemed illegal. I agree that Hartford Police Department and the Higher Fire Department should establish a drone use policy consistent with the federal and state civil rights protections and practices. Drone surveillance is required to follow the same regulations now as helicopter surveillance laws. The City Council serves as a legislative function. It does not create policies. As a reminder, I spoke in favor of the use of drones at the previous City Council meetings. I was on the ATV Task Force, and drones was a solution that was supported by State Senator Fonfera and Fourth District State Representative Angel R. Sevia State funding. The presence of security technology and police presence works on the premise that they deter illegal behavior. We do not have a sufficient police staffing presence due to the financial issues to be an effective deterrent for undesirable behavior, and the use of these technologies is needed. Some of you are concerned about living in a police state. I am concerned that I am now living in a neighborhood with rampant quality of life issues. I have a prostitute on every single corner in front of every single school on Weathersfield Avenue. I have hit-and-run drivers, pedestrian fatalities, homeless shanty towns and open drug use in our parks, as well as vandalism and theft from private and public property. The police and its social services network cannot address these issues as they are focused 100% on murders and major drug cartels. Thank you.
In favor?
Hello, Council. My name is Melvin Medina. I'm with the American Civil Liberties Union of Connecticut. I'm here to testify in support of the ordinance that, 2-48 and 2-49. I want to start with kind of setting the conversation here. There are two ordinances today that most of the people here are for, and that's related either to drones or surveillance technology. One of those ordinances, what it does is it creates policies that enforce municipal entities to engage in the democratic process that we believe in, that the people here in this room are here for.
That's right.
Right? It requires that municipal entities come to you as the City Council, and I could not disagree more with what was just said. You are a legislative body that passes policy. That is your role. I am a voter in this city, and that is what I believe your role is. I was upset to see that there was a council member that started spreading misinformation among city employees saying that the ordinance that has been presented is in some way or some form going to restrict Hartford Police Department, when that's not the intention of the ordinance. The intention of the ordinance is to start a dialogue, a debate. And there are a few things that I would love for all of you to understand. This surveillance technology started in Hartford in 2013. They only told the public in 2016. Many of you on the council were not even informed of the specific technologies that they're utilizing. That's a problem. Nor were Hartford residents. President of the council, you are concerned about predictive policing. For example, did you know that ShotSpotter, which is a software that the city utilizes, just purchased Hunch Lab, which is a predictive policing firm? So they could implement that software. The Chief Rosado went across the city saying that they would never implement facial recognition technology, yet BriefCam, which is the video surveillance technology that they use, now has implemented facial recognition technology. How are you sure that they are not implementing that technology? This ordinance requires the police department to seek approval at every stage from you and from the public that's here. That's why we stand in support of this ordinance. The other ordinance does not do that. What it simply says is they defer to the police department to come up with a policy within 90 days. That is not enough, because they built a surveillance apparatus without the input of community members. And that's what this ordinance is about, setting the conversation the right way, reviewing everything that's existing in the police department and anything in the future. That's your role as council members. That is the role of this community, to dictate what policing looks like in our city. And that's what this ordinance does. I hope you all support it.
Opposed. Opposed.
Good evening, Council. Alyssa Peterson. I want to commend both parties for trying to come up with some kind of policy. I'm not for either of them, so I'm against them, as written. Number one. Number two, I'd like you to come back and revisit the issue collectively and write something better. I do think we need something that oversees the usage of drones. But the ordinance as written is too cumbersome. Again, I commend you. I commend the shortened version also, but right now, it's not what we need. We already have drone technology in the City of Hartford. It's just not mobile. We have the C4 cameras. The C4 cameras have caught so many crimes. They've caught murders, they've caught theft, they've caught drug dealing. We are foolish if we don't think, as a cash-strapped city, we don't need the C4 camera surveillance system in the City of Hartford. I want more cameras. I want five cameras on my street. It is incredible. You call the police about drug transactions going on in front of your house. They get there, they can't do anything. But with the C4 technology, they get the plates, they see the transaction, they can build a case. That's the kind of technology we need. That's the kind of new policing we need, especially when we cannot afford officers. It is your role as the executive oversight, as the legislative body, to come up with alternative solutions when we can't afford bodies on the street for policing. Your number-one role is to oversee our public safety. Residents, businesses, immigrants, illegal immigrants, I don't care who. Safety of everybody is my number-one. So, in addition, with the C4 technology, I don't understand how you've already allowed it. And it's in place. A drone is simply a camera that just takes off and drives around. What you might want to do is simply state what it's limited to. That it will not be used against immigrants. It will not be used against people. It will not be used to search out for no good reason. If you limit it to murder, if you limit it to theft, if you limit it to assault, who doesn't want to catch on camera someone assaulting someone? How about a sexual assault? You think I want to give that up? No. I just want better policies and better review. And if we don't need software recognition, we just need to catch people in the act. If you don't want the software recognition aspect of it, leave it out. We understand, and I am certainly sensitive to identifying people, and, just one second. Identifying people... I'm sorry, yes, sir. I understand all of that. I understand all of that respectfully. I just want to make sure we're not making the wrong decisions. Thank you.
Support.
My name is Akia, oh my God. My name is Akia Bake. I'm a freshman in high school, and I'm with Grow Hartford. I support the ordinance amending Chapter Two, Sections 2-48 and 2-49. City's council's job is to make decisions that will benefit Hartford and its people. They did not consult with us before granting $2 million to the police for drones to surveil us with. Why do you refuse to let us be present in our own criminalization? And why do you continue to represent a city whose well-being you clearly don't care about? With this policing grant, City Council is telling us that they'd rather have us in prison than in school. With this grant, City Council is saying they'd rather have us dead than outside in stores in our homes. With this policing grant, you are furthermore proving how the lack of community and youth inclusion inside your meeting rooms continues to do more harm than good. Those voting against the amendment of the ordinance are blatantly stating that they plan to do things with these drones that they don't want the public knowing about. Voting against this ordinance, a set of regulations for the use of drones, is an abuse of power and a refusal of accountability.
Opposed.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hyacinth Yen, Chair of the Maple Avenue Revitalization Group. I'm here to talk about working together, getting a good policy that works for the whole city. We have federal government that use drone, and I have to let you know, there's people in the community that has drones. Okay? It doesn't have to come through City Council. And looking at the Fire Department, are you planning to control what the Fire Department do with their drones, too? Okay? Open your eyes, people. We need to work together to come up with something good that benefits the whole City of Hartford. Okay? It's not about just, okay, the working family has come up with something. They want to be against, they want to be against everything that we do in the city. Sorry. Okay? So, I'm here because I want to make sure that coming up with a policy that works for everyone, not tying the Hartford Police Department hands from doing what they need to do. I do not think the City of Hartford Police Department are in the business of going out looking for illegal immigrants. I don't think they're in the business of flying a drone over and dispatching a rally or something like that. Now, as I said before, we need to come up together, sit down, and talk about what may work for the whole city. We are in dire need of funding for the police department. We need all the equipment we can to keep our city safe. We've known that there has been a lot of murder, a lot of things goes on in this city, and most times because people are afraid of coming out to speak. It's went by the wayside. With these cameras that we have in the city, we are able to solve a lot of problems. All right? And as I said, this is not about the black, white, or brown people of this city. We need to get that out of our head. Let's look about safety for our community. If you guys sit down with the police department, get the federal regulation, and put it together, there's no need for us to be fighting about our privacy. Okay? Because I'm going to let you know, we don't have privacy anymore. We all have this. We know, the federal government, everybody knows where we're at. Night and day. So, let's clear our ears out, people, and let's start focusing and making the City of Hartford safe so we can have people wanting to feel good. You know, I sat today at the hospital and listened to what's going on in Hartford, and a lady sat there and said, "Oh, boy, they just can't get it together, can they?" All right? Probably didn't know I was from Hartford. But just to let you know, stop fighting progress, and let's get together and work together for the betterment of the City of Hartford and not for individual. Okay? Thank you.
Those in support of item number one. Support. 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 Of item number one.
Hello, my name is Robin Stanifer, lifelong city resident. When I first heard about this, it actually, it made me feel somber because I thought to myself, okay, Hartford, Connecticut is a city that's going to acquiesce to technology. Just because technology is present doesn't necessarily mean that us humans have to use it, but we choose to do so most of the time anyway. Having said that, I just want to open up with a little quote, real quick. "They who can give up essential liberty to obtain a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." Benjamin Franklin. Now, I'm actually, the reason why I came up in support of this, I'm a realist. I understand that this will be rolled out. And let me just say to those who say that we have Facebook, we have our phones, and we have gotten too desensitized, people. You just want to just roll out and give away your liberties. Think about this. Think about when you leave the house, ask yourself this simple question. What is essential liberty? Is your liberty your personal space? So, these drones are intrusive. I understand that they can help, and I actually can understand there's going to be some good opportunities, and there's going to be some good come from these drones. But this is a very somber moment. We are talking about liberty. I'm a Marine Corps veteran. I risked my life for this country. Understand that you are just giving away a piece of yourself for this. Just understand that, even if you're for it. So let me just go by these, just go down these bullet points real quick. First, a comprehensive, transparent, and clearly distinct policy should be in place. Second, the implementation and going forward should be a mayor and city council love and drivel situation. No department head should have any discretion at all. They should only be able to work from the policy. Any desired exceptions should come to the City Council. Go to the City Council. Any video footage not related to a pending legal case should be made available to the public or press pursuant to parameters set by council and the ordinance itself. Legal consequences shall have to be in place for the wrongful use of the drones of any gathered video, live or recorded. This would include elected officials, city staff, and the public at large. Perhaps this should be an issue with the state legislative body. And finally, a plan should be put in place to educate the public, perhaps ongoing with web-based learning, having an educational rollout in schools, educating local employers and their staff. There are many people who come into Hartford to work. This all has to be taken into account. Well, that's it.
Thank you. Opposed.
Actually, I'm kind of confused, but I just wanted to tell you that I'm in favor of the cameras, the drones, for safety reasons. And I don't know who planted a seed to the immigrants. Nobody ever said that the drones are going to follow the immigrants. I guess somebody's using this as a political dream to attract the immigrants. The immigrants are not going to be threatened by this, number one. Number two, the cameras are fantastic. I'm so excited. And thank you, Alyssa. Alyssa brought a lot of things to light in Hyacinth. There is a person with political purpose is planting a seed in here, the working families. We need to support the police department. We're not their enemies. And they are going to be using this for the right purpose. They are going to use it to catch the criminals. You know, the other day, they had a private drones when I was in school with lots of children? They were using it for safety purpose, to track down the children. This is fantastic. People should not be afraid if they're not doing anything wrong. The only people that are saying no, no, no is because they probably have something to hide. So you know what? We need to support the police department. It's about time that you guys think about that and not use it, you know, like Donald Trump for political purpose, always planting the wrong seed in people's head. We're not against the immigrants, and I know the police department is not against the immigrants. And I know a lot of immigrants, and you know what? They know it by me. So, please, support the drones. We need it. We have lots of crimes. We have everything that is going in Hartford. We need them. We need to support the police department. Thank you.
Support. Hi, my name is Ryle Jarvis. I use they/them pronouns, and I'm here with True Colors. I'm here in support of the ordinance amending Chapter Two, Section Two to the Hartford Municipal Code, adding Section 2-48 and 2-49. I just want to point out some things that are happening if this goes into play. So, people in authority positions are biased to racial profiling and in certain instances mistake others for people of specific skin colors. Youth are forced to cooperate with abusive living situations, lack of health care, and poor education systems until they're 18, yet we are supposed to comply with the government invading our privacy without our consent? And then in future references, this money should go to homeless shelters, gun control and gun safety, schools and education, youth spaces, LGBT safe spaces, diversity training in police force, teachers, social work, medical personnel, and disability advocacy. I hope for a change. Thank you.
Those opposed to item number one. Opposed.
Bernadine Silver, Hartford, Connecticut. I am neither, I'm something like Alyssa. But I want you to know that I believe that I don't care what party you were, that you have to work together if you care about... I don't care what party you were, that you have to work together if you care about the City of Hartford, and if you care about us, because that's why you were elected, whether I voted for you, or voted for you, or who I might have voted for or not voted for. Once you sit there, then you represent me. And in representing me, you represent all of the residents of the City of Hartford, and those that either live, work, recreate, end, or worship in the city. And I would like for you all to get together, because I'm not really familiar with all of this, so I'm not gonna try to do a dissertation and be smart. What I want you to do is look at this for the best interest of the residents of the City of Hartford, that we do no harm, but we make sure that nobody does harm to us. And that's what I'd like to see happen.
Those in support?
Hello, my name is Bren Lee Delgado, also they/them pronouns, and I work with True Colors. I would like to put a voice to the youth in this community, because many believe that we do not have a mind to process these types of things, and that we do not have the proper voice to speak for them, and I would like to disagree. I am a minor, I do not believe that my surveillance footage would be of any use. I also do not like the fact that my face will be put in places that I do not know of. There is no communication to the community that would let us know that this was happening, how it would happen, and how would it affect us. Schools are places of sanctuary at most, and I do believe in safety, but I do not believe in watching over from some sort of camera in the sky. I also believe that the police as an institution is something that isn't the best right now, and giving them more ammunition to racially profile, to, um, to, to, uh, thank you, to racially profile, and to take further oppression onto this community, which is mostly of people of color, and, yeah, literally people of color and minorities that have no voice. But there are so many here today, and I'm glad that they have spoken. I would like to say that, again, I am for safety. I love the fact that this is something that will bring safety to the community, but I also believe there are so many things that have gone wrong, and that there should be more communication with us. We have elected, I have not, but soon I will be able to elect people who represent me better and have better communication with my community. Whoever, who knows, I might be in your seat one day? And so, and I would, yeah, thank you. I would, I just, better communication next time, thanks.
Those opposed, and I just would remind everybody that comes up and speak, please make sure you state your name, but also your address, and if you represent an organization, that organization, and if it's in Hartford or not, please. Thank you.
Hi, Anne Goshiggy, in Weathersfield Avenue, I'm representing myself tonight. Like some others have said, I'm not totally opposed, and I'm not totally for either manifestation of this ordinance, but there's something I want to bring up here. Having read many things this week online about this meeting tonight, a couple of things kind of jumped out at me. One was that, what happens if this technology is used at vigils and rallies? What happens if this technology is used and our children are caught on camera? Well, guess what? Vigils, rallies, your children, they're caught on camera all the time. Who's gonna stop people out there filming things, taking pictures, taking video of these things? It happens constantly. Do you know what they're doing with it? No. Do you know what the drones are going to be doing with it, and the police department by association? No. So that is a point that really doesn't even belong there. It's not a point that's well-taken. We've been open to being publicly filmed, recorded, and photographed for a long, long time now. That's one thing that I wanted to mention. This does not mean I don't feel there should be regulations and controls on the use of this surveillance technology, but let's not go overboard and get overly dramatic about worst-case, what-if scenarios. Maybe, and I've noticed tonight, most of the people, like myself, speaking in opposition are, what shall we say, older people, and you're probably, some of you, young people, and I used to be one of you back in the late 1960s, doing the same kind of thing you're doing now, okay? This is not new. You didn't invent sliced bread, you didn't invent activism. So, excuse me, excuse me. So let me finish. We're older, and maybe, it doesn't mean that we are against what you're for, it just means that we're looking at it from a different angle, and you should consider what we are saying here also. I applaud your passion, all of you, seriously. I am totally for what you're trying to do here. But let, again, let us not turn this into some major dramatic issue. You cannot say with any certainty that these things are going to be used against average citizens in a negative way. That is projection. Let's not project, let's wait and see exactly what it's all about. Thank you.
In support. In support.
Hi, yes, my name is Chris Estrada, I live in West Hartford currently, but I am a graduate of Weaver High School, and a longtime resident of Hartford prior to moving to West Hartford. I want to first talk about the fact that this ordinance is bipartisan, is supported through bipartisan support. It isn't just the Working Families Party, but it's also Democrats, and I heard also Republicans are supporting the ordinance, so I want to make sure that information is very, it's here, and that people are aware of that. Also, as a former and longtime resident of Hartford, I've lived in the South End of Hartford, I've lived in the North End of Hartford, and the reality of it is, is that it wouldn't be the West End of Hartford who will be problematized with something like this ordinance, if this ordinance doesn't pass. It'll be the North End of Hartford, it'll be the South End of Hartford, it'll be the communities of color that compose the City of Hartford. And, you know, for people to say that the police department wouldn't use it against individuals, it's just not true, right? We know that in general, across the nation, and in Hartford specifically, we have some serious issues with racial profiling, racial bias, we have a lot of issues with overuse of power in our current structure as it is. So to give a police chief or to give a police commission the ability to oversee themselves, it hasn't worked, and it hasn't worked yet, right? And the reality of it is, is that we haven't seen any increase in racial profiling training, in anti-racial profiling training, so we're spending, we have $2 million, or whatever the amount was for the grant, to do this particular, to get all this technology, but we have spent zero money or zero effort, or little money or little effort in comparison, to make sure that the police officers that we do have on the ground actually are trained in racial bias, racial profiling. So that shows another commitment on behalf of having the community involved in the protection of the community. It's really disappointing that the state decided to go with this, and it's really disappointing that the governor, I mean, the mayor decided to go along with it as well, knowing that the many issues of crime are not related to skin color, they are related to quality of access, they are related to education, they are related to access in general. So more drones will not stop violence, will not stop crime. Investing in our young people, investing in social programs, investing in the things that matter to this community, that allow us to have access, are the things that matter. So it's really disappointing. As a West Hartford resident, I have every power to go into my city council meeting, and I will tell you that as the capital city of the state, I look to you to be the harbingers, the ones that bring this to the forefront and are able to support this, so that we have full transparency. We did this, we acquired technology, we didn't even know about it as citizens, you didn't know about it as legislators, and now we know about it, but we're supposed to trust that the same people who bought the technology, used the technology, and haven't told us anything about the technology, are able to keep themselves accountable. I just don't believe that, the statistics don't believe that, and the qualitative and quantitative data does not believe that either. So the reality of it is, is that as a West Hartford resident, and as a longtime resident of Hartford, I support this because it is full transparency. That is the least we can do for the community that we're a part of. Thank you.
Opposed to item number one?
I will say this in Spanish, is it okay over everyone? Okay. Hola, mi nombre es Gisela Martinez, representante de la Organización Vecinos Unidos y residente de Hartford. Vengo a dar mi testimonio y opiniones y sugerencias en respecto a la ordenanza sección 2, 48 y 2, 49. Como residente de Hartford, me alegra que la ciudad esté queriendo mejorar la seguridad de la ciudad, pero me temo que el uso inapropiado y negligente cause más problemas de lo que ya tenemos. Una de las preocupaciones es la debida rotulación de los equipos aéreos, ya que personas inescrupulos quieran usar sus drones privados y simular que se trata de equipos policiacos para cometer fechorías como tráfico humano, pedofilia, acoso, y ataques raciales. El logo debe ser leible y con uso de luces especiales reconocibles en la noche. El otro asunto que me preocupa es el uso de equipos aéreos en los residenciales públicos o cualquier otro tipo de residencia. La Casa Blanca está prohibido el uso de drones. Quien viola dicha ley sería castigado bajo la ley federal. No debería ser diferente a mi casa. Yo vivo bajo el programa UTEC. Esto no quiere decir que mi casa sea privada, mía, y en mi propiedad, mi privacidad. No quiero enterarme que en un caso de corte la prueba que tenga la policía sea un video donde la primera protagonista soy yo desnuda bailando four line. Tampoco quiero drones persiguiendo personas en mi comunidad. Las leyes deben ser fuertes para aquellas funcionarios que usen drones para la persecución de personas sin importar su origen racial o estatus migratorio. Ni existan excusas legales para sostener las persecuciones e invasión de propiedad. Quiero respeto de espacio tal como la Casa Blanca. Quiero tener el derecho de protección de mi privacidad y mis vecinos. Mi tercera preocupación es el uso de los equipos privados en las carreteras. Si un dron se desconecta de su señal y cae al suelo causaría un horrible accidente de carretera. También hay posibilidades del mal uso de estos equipos. Choque con aves, viento, torrenciales, además de los problemas tráficos aéreos que según la ley federal de espacio aéreo requiere. Sin olvidar que tenemos dos aeropuertos cerca. Los drones no deberían ser usados cerca de las autopistas salvo en caso de rescate. Espero que tengan en cuenta estos puntos que les mencioné al determinar las leyes de manejo de estos equipos. Aunque tengo más preocupaciones, pero solo tengo tres minutos. Gracias por escucharme. Thank you.
Through the, through Madam President, usted estaba a favor de la ordenanza de los cinco concejales o en contra? Usted está a favor de la ordenanza de los cinco concejales o está en contra de la ordenanza?
Tenía que tener más información sobre esto.
Okay. So, opposed?
Hi, my name is Kathleen Maldonado, I am from the North End of Hartford, Connecticut. I'm just a little disheartened, maybe a little confused as well, all this was kind of rushed, I have a lot of research to do right now, so I don't know if I'm yay or nay, but someone mentioned transparency, and I'm new to the voting world, this was my first year voting, and so, putting a lot of, thank you. That's me trusting someone. I also got involved in a lot of public safety meetings this summer. All I kept hearing was transparency, 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 that's all I heard. So I'm saying, to get $1,000, some people, it could take them six months to save that. I could imagine how long these $2 million were floating around, and to talk about drones, and this wasn't even mentioned anywhere, and I had like a week maybe to come up here and decide if I'm for it or against it. I'm not sure. I just, I'm disappointed for the lack of transparency for the Hartford Police Department, that this is coming out. I do wish to know, what crimes are they trying to predict? There are cameras on my block where I live at, on Bethel Street, and they are only used when there's a shooting. I've been in this building, my parents have been there for about 15 years. We've been robbed in the last two years, two cars were left on bricks, and we couldn't use these cameras to catch the perpetrator. A lot of us thought even the perpetrator lived right in the building with us. Hartford Police Department wouldn't even do fingerprints on the rims of the cars, on the brakes, nothing, they did nothing for us. So, for these drones to fly around while I'm on my hammock on my back porch, I don't know how I feel about that. I want to do more research, and I'm very, very, very disappointed that I trusted the Chief Rizzato to be transparent with me. It's not right, he didn't show me integrity, I can't be grateful for it, he was not honest with me, and he didn't give me the transparency that I've been asking for all summer. So I got some research to do, guys, thank you.
Support. Those in support of item number one?
Good evening, everyone, my name is O'Rain McMayo, I'm a resident of Hartford, Connecticut, 51 Simpson Street. I've been living here for about 27 years now. I was born and raised in New York. My background is a product specialist at Verizon Wireless, so having everyone here in support of something that I don't think they know fully is great to me, because I purposely decided to go against family wishes as far as their lineage of families, lawyers and doctors, to drop out and study technology, because I understood knowledge precedes us, no matter what title you officials may have, or any of us behind here viewing our opinions, but at the same time, this decision that we make is gonna supersede us going forward. So if our same elected officials from prior times would have looked at us as far as how we're dealing with this word racism, as far as people, we're still not gonna deal with each other any better when technology is being upgraded, or being changed or dealt with, because when that happens, then what? So we're gonna have less cops on the road. So whether we're in support or not, everyone needs to take their own time outside of this and find the knowledge that is due to all of us, because at the end of the day, whether it's not a movie or anything that you've seen, you need to protect yourself. Even when we decide that we're gonna have more restrictions, people ask for the transparency, and then on the flip side, we can say they can't handle the truth. So at the same time, if we are to get full transparency, does that mean we still have that human side as far as, we have cameras in here right now? Same type of technology. So when it doesn't benefit someone, it's not a problem. When it benefits you, it's the problem, it's the solution. We know every problem has a solution, whether you think you know it or not. At the end of the day, make this decision from a personal and a family understanding, not from an elected official. Thank you.
Opposition.
Bongi Macabane, West End. I think it's always difficult when you're asked to choose either you're for something or against something, without the context of what you're trying to achieve. I think that this is a very complex issue, because we all support public safety, we want to be safe, at the same time, we also support privacy, and are concerned that people are gonna be surveilled. But I think we've leaped so far in terms of speculation about what is and what's not going to happen. Every decision that impacts Hartford should be made within the context of what does Hartford need, and how do we achieve those objectives without pitting people against each other? And I just think you have to be very careful not to ginny up people with all of these scare tactics. We want to be safe, and we want our privacy. How do we achieve that together without setting such division? The issue that really concerns me is there are so many issues in Hartford that we need to rally around, but somehow, people find the energy and the strength to be against something. Our city needs to be more for, what are we for? And how do we achieve that? And I think as a council, we've got to figure out different ways to bring people out to achieve desired outcomes for the city, not to be against this regulation or that regulation. Everybody wants private privacy for citizens, but I also want to be safe. And so I just think we should proceed, and I think others have said, those of us that are older and, you know, longer in tooth, we have experience, and what we've learned is, you achieve better outcomes by being for something than being against. And somehow, as a community, we really need to get addicted to what does Hartford need and how to achieve it. I try to read the ordinance, it's so complicated, there's so many components, that any, all you can do is ginny people up, they're gonna take away your privacy. It feels very Trumpian to me. I think we are better than that. We need to say, we need safety in our communities, we need this, we need that, and as a council, we need people to show up to get things done, instead of always being for. I go to a lot of meetings, and I'm sorry, 90% of the people in here, I don't see, when we're talking about schools, when we're talking about streets, when we're talking about the kids in this community, I don't see them. Against, 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 try to be for something.
Hi, I'm Reverend Erica Richmond, I'm a resident of West Hartford and a minister in the City of Hartford. Hi, I'm Reverend Erica Richmond. I'm a resident of West Hartford and a minister in the city of Hartford. I want to say that I'm against drones. I think that it's, it goes against our privacy. It goes against our civil liberties. And I personally want to thank the members of the council that have spoken truth to power in the police department. I think that to speak truth to power is a brave act of patriotism and to suggest otherwise is cowardly and short sighted. So thank you for those of you who have stood up to the untransparent actions of our police department. I also want to say that I think that having drones and having unregulated drones really infringes on all of our civil liberties. I want to say that I think that white women's fears have often been used as an excuse to militarize and create racist policies in this country. That history has created a brutal violence against my friends of color, against people of color across this country, including undocumented people, where these drones would surely hurt them and cause fear. When people are fearful, they are afraid to ask for help when they truly need it. And I'd like to create a community where we're able to speak and seek the support that we need when we need it. So please, I know that this was a quality of life grant. I feel like my quality of life is not improved by this. I'm a white woman who feels that this quality of life is not acceptable for my peers and for people that I respect. So thank you for your time.
Opposed.
I find after reading over all these ordinances, they're very confusing. Which says to me, they're not transparent enough and they probably should be stronger. I spent 37 years in the United States Army and we've had drones and cell phones and we've had cameras and secret cameras around for years. And they've been around and not very well regulated. All these things are very dangerous and they should be highly regulated. And we should have ordinances that will help us, help the council, highly regulate these things. We can't just let people go, people control these. Whether you think that they're automatic and they're, these drones are flying around, somebody's, somebody's controlling that drone. Somebody's programming the drone. Somebody's programming the camera that's sitting up on somebody's roof or some light pole somewhere. Somebody programmed the, your cellphone, your iPods and all these things. And don't think that the federal government, if they want to know where you are, if you have a cellphone, they know where you are if they want. And certainly same with cameras and anything, they can use any of these things to find out where you are, what you're doing. And these things have to be highly regulated. We can't just let anybody do it. I mean, we entered some problems during the Obama administration and with the, with the security, National Security Agency and they were, they were actually spying on people and they could tell where people were. And they had to create some regulations, Congress had to create some regulations. And so what I say in conclusion is that we need to rewrite our ordinances and we need to buy ordinance or by law, we need to highly regulate these things. They're very dangerous. And it's the city council, the state legislature and the federal Congress that has to do it. And we as the citizens here, and my name is Michael Downs by the way, and I live at 74 Rosemont Street, forgot that. And that, and I've been in Hartford 45 years. But these things have to be highly regulated. And so I'm against these ordinances only because I think they're too weak and not transparent enough. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Alexander. I live at 136.
Are you opposed or in favor of it?
I'm in favor. He was opposed. Yeah, he was against.
You are against the ordinance, right. So now in favor.
So as I, I'm going to say again. Hello, my name is Kimberly Alexander. I live at 136 Hebron Street and I'm a part of Connecticut Students for a Dream. I'm testifying in support of ordinance amending chapter two of the Hartford Municipal Code, section two for, section two dash 48 and section two dash 49. I live in the north end of Hartford in a community where most of its constituents are of Caribbean descent. I have witnessed the heightened policing of my friends, family and neighbors. With the adoptions of drones, increased surveillance and the coded language of predicting crime, we can only expect to see an even larger increase of policing within the community. If the city council, if the Hartford City Council does not create clear rules for how city police collect, store and share surveillance footage and information, Hartford's police surveillance could contribute to ICE's digital deportation machine and tear families apart. Depending on which channels ICE, the FBI and other federal agencies use to demand information from Hartford PD, the city may not be able to stop ICE and other federal agencies from accessing drone or surveillance, surveillance camera footage. The lack of rules to clarify how Hartford Police will collect, store and share the surveillance footage that they gather through drones and other cameras also means that immigrant families are in the dark regarding how police will treat requests for surveillance footage and how federal government, including ICE, including ICE. This contributes to the fear and distrust of police and that's something that Hartford Sanctuary City Ordinance was supposed to help prevent. It is for these reasons that I support the ordinance amending chapter two of the Hartford Municipal Code. I would like to, no, I would demand that Hartford Police is transparent with the public and its growing surveillance program. They must acquire the council's approval and have a public hearing on the use of any existing or future use of surveillance technology, including drones. The passing of the ordinance amending chapter two of Hartford Municipal Code, section two forty, dash forty-eight, two dash forty-nine would address some of these concerns and take our safety and opinion into account and urge, and I urge the committee to vote favorably for this ordinance and take the voices of Hartford's immigrant community in the north end into account. And since I got time left over, I would like to bring up the point of how a lot of people have mentioned how we're dividing the community and all that stuff that they want to talk about. But I want you guys to think about what crime means and how that label has already othered people. And how putting labels on people, putting, calling them criminals, calling them drugs, prostitutes, that's already putting them on another level or another, they're others. They're not part of our community anymore. So I just want to say that. Thank you, everyone.
Opposed. Those opposed to item number one.
I'm not opposed or agree. What I, what I'm opposed to is the process by which these things happen. I think the people that are most affected by issues should be in the forefront of solving them. And what I see happen over and over and over again is decisions are made for people who live in this city that don't reflect their thoughts or ideas. And that's what I really am opposed to. Is the fact that people should be brought in very early when these issues are being discussed to help come up with the solutions that will work in their community. What we find over and over and over again is that decisions are made about what's going to happen. And that's why you end up with this situation because people are not brought into these dialogues early enough to make decisions that actually benefit this community. And that's the problem. I mean, all men are created equal. How long ago was that written? Yet we're still facing systemic racism every single day. We're still facing racial profiling every single day. So we have to have a lot of checks and balances. I don't know if the way this is written is the perfect way for it to be written, but I do know that the people that are here in this room should be helping to write these things. That's what I'll say. Thank you.
Support. Those in support of item number one.
My name is Amavelis. I live in 168 Benton Street.
My name is Stephanie Rios. I live in Standish Street.
We are a part of Connecticut Students for a Dream and we are testifying in support of the ordinance amending amending chapter two of Hartford Municipal Code, section two dash forty-eight and two dash forty-nine. We live in the south end and despite the Sanctuary City Ordinance, we who live in the south end know that police and ICE work together in our community, targeting people by how they look and ripping apart families, causing distrust of police and local government.
As someone who cares zibly about protecting immigrants from ICE's digital deportation machine, I urge you to support this proposal to create rules for police drone use in Hartford and to expand this ordinance to take control of other police surveillance devices.
Drones increase deportations and increase fear. People in our community will feel afraid to go outside. Drones will increase collaboration between police and ICE. Vigilant, the company that stores license plate reader information for the Capital Region Police Chief Association, recently signed a contract to provide ICE with full access to its license plate reader database. This means that ICE could take undocumented people's license plate reader scans. If the city council doesn't pass an ordinance to take, to, to take control of how the city collects, stores and shares police surveillance, the city will be contributing to ICE's deportation machines and tearing immigrant families apart.
Immigrants are scared and under attack from the federal government. We need the city council to show that it stands with us by passing an expanded version for the ordinance to protect us from unchecked surveillance.
Immigrants are Hartford. We are your family members, neighbors, friends and coworkers. Recognizing this, Hartford adopted a Sanctuary City Ordinance. But if Hartford doesn't create rules for how police collect, store or share surveillance footage, the city will go back on that promise to welcome all people.
We urge you to vote favorably for an ordinance amending chapter two of the Hartford Municipal Code, section two forty-eight and section two forty-nine. We need guidelines and regulations about how the drones will be used so we know they are not being used to criminalize our communities and families. Thank you very much.
Opposed. Those opposed of item number one. Those opposed to item number one. Opposed. In favor of item number one.
My name is Marcus Spinner. I'm a student at the Yukon School of Social Work. I work and do business in Hartford. I'm a former resident. I have many friends and loved ones in the city. I'm here in support of an amendment to chapter two, section two, to the Hartford Municipal Code, adding section two dash forty-eight and two dash forty-nine. According to the National Center for Women in Policing, two studies have found that at least 40% of police officer families experienced domestic violence. This stands in stark contrast to 10% of families in the general population. Forty percent of police officer families experienced domestic violence. Are we to trust aerial surveillance drones and high-tech facial recognition software in the hands of an agency with a pervasive domestic violence problem? Are we to trust drones in the hands of the Hartford Police Department? The same police department which employed Justin Torniero, a 10-year veteran who was caught stealing department-issued equipment in exchange for cocaine on the job? The same police department who promoted Steven "Trigger Happy" Barone to the Community Response Unit after his suspension in the Emilio Diaz brutality case? Would you want Torniero or Barone or any of their supervisors in control of high-tech, military-grade surveillance equipment? As a student who attends class in this town and as a worker who does business here, drones do not make me feel safer. And as a former resident living in a neighborhood with homelessness and drug addiction, drones would not have made me feel safer. As a society, we have a tendency to meet the effects of poverty and adversity with physical violence and might. Rather than addressing societal needs, we enforce law and order and demand submission. Councilman Jimmy Sanchez and State Senator John Istand with white men Fanfarah think that $2.5 million grant would be best spent on high-tech Minority Report-style surveillance equipment. I'm going to repeat that one more time in case you live in Hartford.
Please refrain from directing any comments to, you address the council as a body, please.
Okay. State Representative John Fanfarah represents parts of the north end, including everything south of Interstate 84. They want to make this city great again by making it a state-of-the-art surveillance city. I can think of countless more ways that we can spend $2.5 million on improving our police department. Maybe the department could provide more thorough de-escalation training. Maybe the department could provide more thorough and ongoing mental health support for their officers. Maybe the department could listen to the National Center for Women in Policing and spend that $2.5 million on a concentrated effort to increase the amount of women in their ranks. Women have been proven less likely to rely on physical force and more on communication skills to diffuse potentially violent situations. Women are also more likely to effectively respond to police calls regarding domestic violence and violence against women.
Opposed to item number one. Those speaking in opposition. Opposed. In favor. Those speaking in favor of item number one.
I'm very confused about opposed or against, but I'm against. I'm a drone.
Name, can you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Miguel Rivera. I live on 67 Hampton Street, the north end of Hartford, the real north end of Hartford down there. I'm a drone enthusiast. But this technology is too, too new still to be used by Hartford Police Department. There are three qualified drones that can be only be used by their city. Either ones can be weaponized with tear gas. You can add a gun, a semi-machine gun. And drones are, can easily be manipulated, the software, because they are not encoded by the WPA2. I can be a mile away and half away and I can take that drone possession, take it to my house, destroy it. This is too new for us. We have to look at this better. Because as a citizen that's been here for 22 years, living in the north end, it's too new. It's too new for us. It's better way they can spend the $2.5 million. Better training to new recruitments, better equipment to police officers, to understand the mental health of issues of everybody. Because it can be easy escalate. It's too new. I'm certified by the FAA and it can be, just knowing that the police department don't have to, it will not be required to pull out a permit. Every time is they're going to fly, it's just outrageous. I have to pull out a permit every time I'm going to take out my drone out of my house. So why they cannot do that? Why it cannot be manipulated by not the police department? Somebody can oversee that and oversee how the technology is being used. Open software, open software recognition, face recognition, it can be used. Cellphone tracking. Those drones going to be able to capable of take 50,000 pictures per minute. So the batteries they're going to be using is by the DGI technology. It's hold 40 to 45 minutes. So you know how many pictures is going to be taken on the 45 minutes? Do the count. That money can be used for something way better. They let them have possession of these drones. Especially for the Hartford Police Academy, for those new people that want to become police officers to serve us. Serve us and serve the community as one. That's all I have to say.
Opposed. I mean, I'm sorry. In favor.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Camille Kritzman. I live on 239 Farmington Ave in Hartford. I testify in strong support of an ordinance amending chapter two of the Hartford Municipal Code, section two dash forty-eight and section two dash forty-nine. We, the residents of Hartford, did not have an input on if our city should have drone surveillance. And many residents who have, I've been speaking to about this issue did not have prior knowledge that drones would be a reality and have expressed a lot of concerns and anger over the violation of our privacy and the exclusion of our voices in the decision to engage in this kind of surveillance. The $2.5 million grant has been accepted, but we need guidelines about how the drones will be used. The ordinance would ensure that there is transparency, accountability and a public process included before each purchase of surveillance equipment. It includes a reporting process to increase accountability. The ordinance would include provisions for the protections of the right to privacy, especially of minors. Without this ordinance, there's no accountability of how surveillance, our images without our explicit consent will be used. As someone who works closely with the immigrant community, I know that having drones and increased surveillance will only increase fear and anxiety. People are already afraid to leave their house in Hartford. An increased presence of police will only increase the feelings of being unwelcome and unwanted in their own community. I would like to, I would like to refer a little bit to what I've, some hot comments that I've heard today about how, you know, people don't think that, people don't think that the police will use this technology to target immigrant communities. People feel like that won't happen. The truth is, it's already happening and people who live in these communities are aware of this. People who live in the south end already know that ICE is at large on Franklin Ave. People who live in the north end already know that ICE is operating on Albany Ave. This is already common knowledge. So to say, oh- So to say, oh, they won't do it. I feel like they won't. Well, we already know that they are, so why would we give police and federal government more access to surveillance technology? Why would we give them more opportunities to do so? Like I said, this is already common knowledge. Without an ordinance, we can't ensure that the information collected by drones will not be used in ICE's deportation machine. Federal agencies could demand information from the Hartford PD. The city might not be able to stop ICE or other federal agencies from accessing drone or surveillance camera footage, which would continue to wreak havoc and break apart families in our cities, which by ordinance is a sanctuary city. And the sanctuary city ordinance was meant to help prevent fear and mistrust of police. And without an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of Hartford Municipal Code, Section 2-48 and 2-49, we're going back on the ordinance meant to protect families in Hartford and make our residents feel unsafe and like their voices don't matter in our city. Although we did not get a say in if Hartford would accept the funding for drone surveillance in our communities, this ordinance would mean more transparency around how and when our images are being used and by who. I urge the council to vote favorably for an ordinance amending Chapter 2. Thank you so much for your time.
Those opposed to item number one. Opposed to item number one. In support of item number one.
Thank you very much. I'm John Fonfara, Monowee Street in Hartford, State Senator. Heard my name mentioned a few times while waiting outside. I am the individual who pushed for and secured the funds for our city, for quality of life in our city. Originally, it was for three things. One, for speed tables, of which some of those dollars have been deployed across our city, I think more often than not favorably received. Also, $1 million for quality-of-life police, who can answer calls that right now they're unable to because they're called off to more serious crimes. And so when residents of our city struggle to have quality-of-life calls be responded to, often the police department is unable to get there in a reasonable time, often not at all, because of the enormous number of calls that they have to respond to. And then the third was for cameras. We never did do the quality-of-life cops. Ran into some opposition here at the city. Hope someday we can do that. So $2 million of that goes towards cameras and some of it for drones. Primarily for drones because of the problem relating to street bikes, where many of those individuals who maraud our streets lawlessly, endangering the public, know that the cops are unable to chase them. I support that policy of not chasing these individuals, but it leads to increasing amounts of use of those bikes on our street. I'll be quick about this. I'm running out of time. But that's the reason for the drones. And then cameras for the remaining part, which would come under this ordinance. I came here, I was standing here in support of the ordinance, but not currently as it's written. Currently, it can, by not having a public hearing or not having a vote, would prevent the use of these technologies. That shouldn't be the way we write this. I don't believe the people who are in support of this ordinance are against public safety. Not for one minute do I believe that. Nor do I believe the people who are opposed to the ordinance don't believe that these technologies should be regulated properly. The fear that I hear in people's voices, it's real. The fear of police, the fear of authority, the fear of government is real. And we have to take that into consideration. I hope the council will do that. But I hope those that are supporting the ordinance also recognize the overwhelming need in our city to ensure that we have public safety. That's our number-one obligation to our residents, is that they are safe, that their children are safe. And I hope that you'll find a path that both those who truly fear how this technology could be used are protected, and our city residents are protected, while also not discouraging the use of the technology for supplementing the ability to have adequate public safety in our city. Thank you.
Those opposed. Opposed. In favor.
Hi. My name is Paul Browsden, and I live in Eight Settlers Way. And I've come to say, the position of police surveillance has always been on the mind of the city and, of course, the state. Often is asked how much surveillance is needed. The voice is often not heard is, do we need to live in the surveillance state at all? The question should not be one of, are the police in dire need of funding and drones? But why are they needed? Do we need, in a world that's already littered with police brutality, a city not just Hartford, not just outside such as Bridgeport, and even further, to such supposed liberal cities like Chicago with surveillance around every corner, to expand that world? A world of the Patriot Act and NSA, a world of stop and frisk, to have more power? Is it unacceptable? And I speak for my friends, and I speak for those friends of friends, those incarcerated, those who deal with equal police surveillance and hardships, like New Haven with ICE. When I say we stand in full opposition to the expansion of spying, of stopping and surveilling of citizens, especially when we know it will work in against marginalized groups. The question should not be, do the police need more funding? The question should not be, do the police, does the military, do fascist apparatuses such as ICE, where you can be deported for a minor infraction such as speeding, need more funding? But why is it that wealth, that power, not go to Hartford, and to kinetic peoples through healthcare, education, and overall improvements in their lives? Thank you.
Those opposed to item number one. Opposed. Those in favor of item number one.
My name is Mel Eric at True Colors Down the Street. I have questions. I want to know how cameras recording things that already happened predict crime that hasn't happened yet. I want to know how does spying and tracking people without their consent and without any restrictions translate to supporting and protecting those people? I want to know how you can insist a group of people nationally famous for brutality, for hurting women and children, for killing people of color, for erasing indigenous people and immigrants, and so much more, be trusted not to do that with this level of unrestricted access to people's lives here? I want to know how someone can claim that the answer to Hartford's closing schools, a lack of youth space, a lack of training for people who work with people, hungry kids, homelessness, addiction, the school-to-prison pipeline, is to make it easier to put people in prison? How can you put millions of dollars into bettering the quality of life in Hartford without talking to Hartford? Hartford's talking to you right now. You're out of people coming up here to oppose. Three people who came up here to oppose were actually in support. Just saying. We're still going. Hartford is talking to you. Y'all got to listen.
Those opposed to item number one. Opposed. Support. Those in support of item number one.
Hello. My name is Melana Rogers Burson. I live at 166 Beacon Street, and I've been a resident of Hartford for about eight years. I'm in strong support of this ordinance, and I think, I also want to address that we already have a precedent for using surveillance technology to target communities of color. I want to speak as a South Asian woman who knows that our communities have been targeted by surveillance technology since 9/11 on a national level, but also locally, and has been used specifically to deport people, to put people in cages, people of color. And so there's proof that this is happening, and that it can happen in Hartford. There's precedent both on the city level and on the national level, and we need to remember that. So I am definitely against this technology in general, but I think just at the very least, we need to look at community and trust the community to give input on surveillance technology overall, and that we have a right to know what's happening in our city. I also want to speak as somebody who works around community engagement, and I know that in Hartford, we've had a lot of community engagement processes here in the city, where we've trusted community residents. We've had dialogues around children of incarcerated parents. We've had dialogues around immigration, dialogues around mental health, and trusted the community to actually come up with solutions to their own problems. And also got to work with Hartford Decides, where we actually trusted residents to determine how they wanted to set budget priorities, and specifically around safety. So the group that I worked with was specifically tasked with coming up with solutions and specific projects that they wanted to work on around safety. So I think we do, like, we can trust the community to come up with these solutions and to have that information, to be transparent with the community, and give them that voice to actually make these decisions. And I think that's really the least we can do in terms of surveillance. And I also just wanted to mention that we do have other cities who are passing similar ordinances. Somerville, Massachusetts, Seattle, Washington, Oakland, California, Santa Clara County, California, and Nashville, Tennessee are just some of those places that are doing this. And I think, you know, we do owe it to the community to really listen and give them a chance to respond to the surveillance technology that we're proposing. So, thank you.
Opposition. Those opposed to item number one. Opposed. In support. Those in support.
Good evening. My name is Stefan Keller. I live at 166 Beacon Street. I stand here in support of the ordinance. First, I should give a shout-out to all the youth that spoke tonight. I think that a lot of people say the youth are the future, but I think the youth are now, especially here in Hartford. When I walk around the city, I see youth at U-Media, ICE youth out enjoying themselves, like, youth trying to better the city. And I think that those youths shouldn't have to live in fear of being charged or potentially being, as some of the parts of the, some of the technology says, like, thinking that they're going to commit a crime before they do. Right? They should be able to create the future of the city that we all want to see. Right? So I think that's the first thing. The second thing is, I work for Connecticut Students for a Dream. We're an organization that's led by immigrant and undocumented young people. And one of the things that I think is super important is that if Hartford's going to say it's a sanctuary city, we can't just pass one ordinance about it and then be able to use that name. I think that all of the policies that we pass have to take that into account, right? We need to make sure that every policy we look at needs to be protecting the immigrant community and not putting them in danger. And I think without putting strict regulations on how surveillance is used, ICE is a really rogue agency, and without those regulations, it's not even the Hartford Police's call sometimes, right? They can make decisions that sometimes go above the city. We can't allow that. And another thing is, I think a lot of people have talked about something that I would say is the benefit of the doubt, but I don't think the system gives residents the benefit of the doubt. Undocumented folks don't get the benefit of the doubt when they're arrested by ICE. Like, a lot of people that are picked up and are charged with crimes they may not commit and forcibly guilty, they're not given the benefit of the doubt. So we should not give the system the benefit of the doubt. We need to have policies in place that just provide transparency and allow input from the community. That's the least that we can ask for, and that's really what this ordinance is doing. So I'm really proud to speak in support of this. I really support all the things that have been said so far, and thank you for the opportunity.
Those opposed to item number one. Opposed. Opposed. Those in favor of item number one.
Good evening. My name is Melina Cayer. I live in 24 Park Place, and I'm here to support the ordinance. I'm worried about the unregulated use of these drones and the idea of predictive policing because of the assumptions that have to be made in order to predict crime. Given that historically speaking, and currently, law enforcement that use their assumptions to predict the intentions of others have disproportionately hurt communities of color and disproportionately hurt less affluent communities. People in positions of privilege, like white people and affluent people, have to remember that just because it's not a problem for you or for me, that does not mean that it's not a problem. Racial profiling is a problem. And it needs to be discussed in terms of this new technology and its regulation. I am for public safety, and I recognize some of the opportunities that can come from this tech, but most important are the lives and liberties of our Black and Brown brothers and sisters and all the residents of Hartford. I support regulation, transparency, and accountability of this drone technology, which this ordinance addresses. I urge the council to vote favorably for this ordinance, and thank you very much.
Those opposed to item number one. Opposed. Those in favor of item number one. In favor.
Will Moffett, 121 Heath Street. To go back on what Marcus said earlier, it was initially going to be on the Community Response Unit, who was going to be the people who were going to be using these drones. So if Steven Barone wasn't fired, he actually would have been the one who would have had oversight over them. I don't think that the police chief, or the mayor, or Fonfara, or people that are supporting this are kind of twisting their mustaches and they want to get us to be in a surveillance state, in a police state. But that's exactly what we're setting up. It's not just these drones. The brief cam technology we use, the predictive crime software they bought, all these things were bought secretly. The fact that we're only kind of talking about it now, me and a lot of other people have been obsessing over this paranoid for over a year, and the fact that the police are able to do this, we don't know the technologies they have. They don't respond to FOI requests for what they're allowed to get. So who knows what they're allowed to purchase? And the technology is set up to create an oppressive environment. You have a community that already feels like it's being occupied, and we're buying military equipment. We have snipers on rooftops. The camera technology that's being used in these drones was developed in Israel. It's precise. It tracks people. They use the same technology to figure out just the right spot to drop tear gas on protesters before they snipe them down. I'm not saying we're planning on doing that. I don't think we are now, but what's going to happen with the next police chief? What's going to happen when Trump wins again as the president? What's going to happen when this state? What will happen? We can't, the fact that we allowed this to get this far in California, in LA, they've been fighting tooth and nail. We are going to be the epicenter for this little experiment. Because we are so small, because we are so apathetic, because we allow things to happen without our knowledge, this is going to set a precedent that's going to have waves and ripples that I think we will never recover from. So we need to take this time now to do a lot of soul-searching. And I know these can be used to good things. I'd much rather see drones pursue ATVs and cars than police cars, but that was just used as an excuse. They can do whatever they want, and they will because they have, so we have to stay aware of this. I, yeah, just keep doing your work. I'm so glad this ordinance was allowed. I hope you vote in support of it. If you have to tinker with it, please bring it back to the table, because if they're allowed to do whatever they want, we've seen what can happen. This is gonna, the world is watching, the country is watching, this city. So I hope we can do the right things. Thank you.
Oppose. Those opposed. Opposed. Those in favor of item number one. In favor.
Hi. Leslie Hammond, 1 Linden Place. I'm definitely in favor of this ordinance, but I have a number of concerns. First of all, how did we get the drones in the first place? Did we make a decision about that? Did the mayor make a decision just because we got a grant and we could get the drones? I'm wondering why we even accepted them, since we do have 1,000 cameras. I was looking through the past articles. This has been talked about for a year. And one of the articles, Rosado said he's got to work with the ACLU and the people. I mean, have you guys, anybody's talked to Rosado lately? So this was like months ago. So what has the police done? What are they saying? Is there policy? In all the Hartford Current articles, it's from ATVs to chasing cars, which I think most of us agree that might be a good use of them, but it also talks about drug dealing and a variety of other things. So I really feel like we have to have accountability and transparency. But my biggest concern is, we all know, right now, there are zillion code violations with the Housing Department. We don't even have a zoning enforcement officer. We have so many things on the books that aren't followed through, that nobody's having accountability about or transparency. So how is this going to work? Are they going to come in and report to you guys weekly? Are they going to send you reports? How are you really going to hold them accountable once you do set up an ordinance? Because setting up an ordinance sounds great, but I just really want to know about the follow-through and the accountability. Thank you.
Those opposed to item number one. Opposed. Opposed. In favor of item number one. In favor.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Clark, and I'm a resident of Hartford. I've lived in the city for about 25 years now. I have a number of concerns about the use of drones. I'm in support of the ordinance, but I also question the viability of them- I'm in support of the ordinance, but I also question the viability of them from the first place. To me, I think the very issues that they're trying to address are social issues that can be dealt with socially by humans. I don't think we need a technological solution to some of the problems that I hear. I have an issue with Process, Department of Economic and Community Development. When did they get in the business of funding police? I'm really surprised when I hear that. What is their metric for determining what is quality of life? I worked with a 35-year veteran of the Office of Legislative Research who did nonpartisan work on the Public Safety and Transportation Committees. When we had that issue with pocket bites, there was a police response to that. People were spending money hand over fist to try to deal with it, never could get on top of it. You know how they solved it? They made it illegal to sell. We can do something like that with this. We don't need technology to solve that particular problem. I heard some ideas about with ATVs, create a place where kids can ride them. I grew up in Farmington. Kids could ride out there and not get in trouble for doing that stuff. When I moved to the city, it was amazing what they couldn't do because of the confines of the concrete environment. Given my opportunity, it really frustrates me. And in terms of technology, I was sent out to Washington State, the epicenter of some of this technology. I toured Microsoft and Amazon with the Council of State Governments. I looked at what they did with the cloud and all the promises that are being made with technology. And what I'll tell you about that is it's frightening to me. They view technology as a god, as a religion. It's a savior for everything. Everything can be dealt with if you just use technology. And all you have to do is pick up a paper every single day and realize the fault of that logic. Look at Facebook. Every one of your data is now available. My children's data is available. They don't even have the opportunity to say that they won't have a credit card out in their name, that someone won't be able to say they're them by the time they're 18 years old. Technology is not how we're going to solve human problems. Humans getting together with different viewpoints will solve those problems. Thank you.
Opposed to item number one. Opposed. In favor of item number one. In favor.
Good evening, council. Canard Ray, 32 Elm Street, Hartford, Connecticut. Thank you for holding this forum so that the community could voice its opinions on this issue. Really disappointed in this council. This issue has gone for more than a year. All but two council members voted so that these funds could be released and put towards these drones. Two of you weren't here at the time, so you get a pass. But just what Andrew said, Andrew Clark, just a second ago. Why aren't we talking about kids? When we're talking about spending $2.5 million on cameras and drones to criminalize behavior that people in the city of Hartford use for recreation? Andrew said he grew up in Farmington, came to Hartford, couldn't ride dirt bikes and ATVs anymore. I grew up riding dirt bikes and ATVs. All across the country, if you take a look, whether it's in Houston, Philadelphia, Baltimore, there have been similar ordinances proposed against ATVs and dirt bikes. Doesn't that sound like a bill mill? Right? Isn't that something, like, aren't we all familiar with these kinds of bills that crop up under auspices for other reasons, under the guise for other things that end up putting Black and Brown people in jail for a long time, in prison for a long time? We're not familiar with that? This council knows better. You all know better. Every single one of you. And I don't mean to disrespect you or address you in a way that is any less becoming of what, the respect that you deserve, but you know better. You've all experienced what it's like to be in this city and poor. Maybe not John, but you've all experienced it. You've all gone through the paces of what community recreation is like, what it's like, you know, playing handball, stickball, whatever it is that you play on the street and being criminalized for it. An analog was given, I'll give you another one, skateboards about 10 years ago, right? Anti-skateboarding, criminalizing behavior, right? You got to put up signs and ordinances so kids don't ride devices, vehicles meant to use, to be used for recreation? You all know better. You know better. This community knows that you know better. That's why they showed up in droves today. That's why organizers organize to get out more people. That's why we see youth, that's why we see older folks all together in community to make sure that you don't make the wrong move again. Thank you for your time.
Those opposed. Opposed. Those in favor. In favor of item number one.
Good evening. My name is Mary Sanders, 184 Preston Street. Before the drone item was on the agenda, I was planning on coming to my regular public hearing to talk my regular spiel about the Housing Commission, but I guess that's not permitted today, right? Or I was also planning on talking about the secret negotiations going on for a new waste facility. Well, I'll stick to the drone issue, even though I already sent my point of view to Councilwoman Bermudez. I'm definitely in favor of having some oversight. I raised a question months ago as to why the CDC was giving money to Hartford for drones. Like, others have asked, this is a quality of life issue. When Senator Fonfera spoke, he mentioned that that money that came from the Department of Economic Development was meant for three things. The speed bumps, I guess, or the, you know, something, you know, some kind of traffic control, additional officers to address quality of life issues, and then thirdly, and possibly the drones. He also mentioned that there was some pushback about having additional officers hired to address those quality life issues. So that piqued my interest. I'm wondering what was all that about? Could it be that the officers that are already working prefer not to have additional officers interfering with their ability to have overtime? You know, because that's an issue, right? The shortage of officers means that some officers have to work time and a half or double time and make, and get that extra pay and beef up their pensions. And we already know that some officers retire with, you know, pretty hefty pensions, right? $160,000 yearly pension to the officer that was ultimately suspended for the West Hartford attack. Well, anyway, I want to go back to that, you know, hiring additional officers to address these quality life issues. And if there's any, because I'm definitely against the drones. When I found out that the drones were possibly out there already, and I heard a whirring noise at 1:00 in the morning while I was on the computer, because I'm on the computer late at night, I immediately ran to the door and shut the lights off and closed that bedroom door in case there was a drone hovering outside my window. Of course, you know, my kids know I'm a little paranoid, but I don't need to live with that kind of stress. I've been living in the South End of Hartford for 23 years. There's crime going on in all parts of the city. It doesn't have to be addressed by all this technology. It should be addressed by more officers on the street, more community relations being built, better, you know, dialogue and transparency between the residents of Hartford and the departments. City council should be overseeing everything that goes on in every single department because you work for us. We elect you. We don't, we don't elect the department heads.
Those opposed to item number one. Opposed. Opposed. In favor. Item number one. In favor.
My name is Nancy Bowden, and I live in Bloomfield, and that's why I was being last. I wanted to be sure Hartford people could speak. Mary accused me of trying to get the last word, which I'm not. But I also wanted to say that I guess I'm one of, I'm in that category of old people who've been activists for a while, but I do want to say that I've been totally inspired by the passion, clarity, and forcefulness of all the young people that spoke tonight. And maybe they didn't invent activism, but I think they're surely reinventing it. So I wrote a bunch of paragraphs, but really what I want to do is make three points. I also am not in favor of drones, but given that they're already here, it's urgent to address the potential for abuse of that technology. And one of the things that comes to mind is that whenever the police do an internal investigation of an incident, it seems like the conclusion is that the officers acted in accordance to protocol. There was a, an incident a few years back, people will remember, of an improper, I think, taser, excuse me, tasering of an individual. We tried to get a copy of the protocol, and it took going to Freedom of Information Act and many weeks of waiting to get a volume of data that we had to then look through to find out what was the protocol. So that's an issue of, you know, secrecy and fog and mirrors that I think a community input into regulations could avoid. To the point that we're already on camera all the time and that people are always putting our images out, whether it's out on the internet or just on, you know, when you go to your ATM, anything, that's true, but the difference here is that the power that the police have, you know, has to be, has to be checked, has to be owned by the community. What are they going to do with those images? They have the, I felt what I would call a civic chill a couple of years back in Bridgeport at a rally, when there were maybe 50 people in a city park, surrounded by physical police officers, but also a drone overhead. The point of that drone was intimidation. There was no other reason for it, and there was a peaceful demonstration and rally and community conversation about another incident of concern to the community. And the last point I wanted to make was that, to the person who said, why are we always opposed to things and not for things? I think what people here who are speaking for this ordinance are for individual freedom, not the kind of freedom that you get by being, by agreeing to be x-rayed, wanded, searched, surveilled, padded down. So we are for individual freedom.
Those opposed to item number one. Opposed. In favor of item number one. In favor.
Hello, I'm Constanza Segovia from 135 Madison Avenue in Hartford. I wasn't going to speak, but I'm noticing a few themes come up, and I just kind of wanted to say something. So we're talking, you know, this seems actually pretty simple in all of its complexity. We're not trying to address the issues, the systemic issues with our criminal justice system, the systemic issues with the way the police operates in our communities. We, this is not about that today, but we, it is about acknowledging that those issues exist and that we cannot just hand over this technology to entities and systems that are so flawed at this time, right? Like, we can hope that they can get better, and we can work on that together, but right now, we just need, this is, this is a Band-Aid for something that's already a bad situation. We already have this technology in our city, right? So like, the idea of regulating it doesn't seem that progressive to me. Like, it actually is like a pretty basic requirement. How else are we going to operate? Like, this, it's actually very puzzling to me that there's confusion around it. Also, in terms of the role of the police and the job of city council, right? When we talk about public safety and the quality of life of people in the city, I want us to think of whose safety and whose quality of life, right? Like, it's, our city is majority Black and Brown people. Since when do drones that are not regulated are going to keep us safe? Keep our Hartford community safe? Our immigrant community safe? We, people already don't feel safe, even without the conversation about drones. So just, again, like, to me, it's like a pretty simple Band-Aid to put on a bad situation already. And lastly, I call on council to not ignore the amount of people that showed up today to support this amendment. The, you know, I know that city council meetings don't always have this kind of turnout, so when people show up, I think it's your job to listen. Thank you.
Opposed. Those opposed to item number one. Opposed. Those in support of item number one. In support. In support.
Hello, my name is Sneha J. Raj. I work at Everyday Democracy in CBIA, and I'm a master student at Hartford. My sister lives in South Marshall Street, and I testify in strong support at this ordinance. This bill is about democratic control, democratic control for the people, and I'm concerned for the youth in my community being targeted by surveillance. I'm concerned about vulnerable populations that are already targeted by police, like immigrants, Black and Brown people, people with disabilities, and even activists being targeted with drone use. China has, so, an example of like drone already happening, a drone incident is China. So they're begun, they've already begun deploying flocks of drones disguised as birds to surveil its citizens, and the drones have wings that flap, so realistically, they're difficult to distinguish from actual birds. Facial recognition technology is now used for everything, from catching criminals in huge crowds to detecting and shaming jaywalkers, to deciding whether someone can get an extra square of toilet paper in a public bathroom. Some employees have to wear helmets that scan their brainwaves for rage, depression, anxiety, or fatigue and that, and then alert their bosses to any perceived problems. This is showing that this is like discriminating so many different types of populations, and there was a piece that was shown that this is also targeting Muslim, Uyghur Muslims in China. And there was a recent report that came out that said that, that he went to China visiting family, and he endured 17 days of imprisonment for crimes he did not commit, and was unexpectedly released and allowed to go home and eventually returned. But he was just visited at his home by the police, and this is exactly what's going to happen here, too, if we don't have public, public decisions with this ordinance. So this ordinance, which I think is another thing that should be communicated, is that a lot of people in the beginning didn't know what this ordinance was asking for, because this ordinance is for communication with the public. Because a lot of people are saying, oh, like, yes to drones, no to drones, I'm personally for no to drones, but we already bought the drones, so this ordinance is saying that we need communication with the public. We don't want the police just doing whatever with it without communication. And we already know that police discriminate Black and Brown people, immigrants, like, if you don't know that, you're just, you're not reading, you're not seeing the facts. And so, yeah, so that's, and then also, an example of drones is like in Afghanistan, Pakistan, and like, the last administration killed more people, 10 times more people than the Bush administration, that was due to drones. And so that's going to happen here, too, if we don't like communicate with the public. So I support this ordinance.
Those opposed to item number one. Opposed. Opposed. Those in favor of item number one. In favor. In favor. This item is hereby closed. Thank you for those who spoke on item number one. Moving on the agenda to item number two, ordinance amending Division 9D, Chapter 2, Article 5, Section 2-93B of the Hartford Film, Video, Digital Media and Social Media Ordinance of the Municipal Code. Those in favor of this amendment to item number two. Those in favor. In favor. Those opposed to item number two. Opposed. Opposed. One more time. Those in favor of item number two. In favor. Those opposed to item number two. Opposed. This item is hereby closed. Item number three, ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 13- Item number three, ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 13, Section 92938, drones of the municipal code. Those in favor of item number three. In favor. Those opposed to item number three. Opposed.
Good evening. Alyssa Peterson, Grandview Terrace. I think my comments earlier to you were that I was opposed to both ordinances or both as written. I do believe you can go back and do a better job. I think you've heard from both sides here that this needs work. Specifically, this drone used by police and fire departments directs the Fire and Police Department to come up with policies, which will then be promulgated afterwards. This is the reverse of what's supposed to happen. The departments, you're supposed to ask the departments to come up with policies and procedures, and then you approve them as the legislative body. So while I respect that, I believe this tried to take a much lighter approach to the prior ordinance, it's the wrong approach. I think you hear everybody asking you, go back to the drawing board. And I don't believe either is right. I believe the first one, as I said earlier, I don't want to go over that, is too strong or it's too comprehensive. It's going to be far too difficult to put into place. I just think we need some more conversation, and we can come up with some kind of policy that's amenable for all. Thank you very much.
Those opposed to item number three. You were, sorry. In favor of item number three. In favor. In favor. Those opposed to item number three. Opposed. Opposed. The item is hereby closed. Thank you. Moving on. Item number four, resolution requesting the superimposed J. Surges Way at the corner of Jetson and Barber Street to superimpose Marie Kirkley Bayway at the corner of Garden and Ashley Street, to superimpose Presina Holloway Way at the center, the corner of Sagrani Street and Homestead Avenue, to superimpose Norman Lear Street at the corner of Woodstock Street and Blue Hills Avenue. Those speaking in favor of item number four. In favor. Those speaking opposed to item number four. Opposed.
Ann Goshdiggian, Weathersfield Avenue. You know, when I was here back last Monday, or last Tuesday, for the public comment session, that item was mentioned. In fact, there were many people here speaking about it, many citizens speaking in favor of, we don't have to wait until people are dead to honor them. We can change it so you don't have to be two years in the great beyond before a street can be named after you in Hartford. And as I listened to them, I did hear the part about Norman Lear, and I'm thinking, yeah, he was a pretty famous person. He went to Weaver High, graduated in 1940, basically changed the face of television comedy back in the 1970s. And I see the name of Surges, and there was a woman here speaking about her father, who was named Paul Sturgis, spelled differently, and I'm a little confused. Surges and Sturgis are different people. But, yeah, Mr. Sturgis actually passed away in 2005, and his daughter has been trying to have that change made since 2007. Mr. Lear is still alive. He's 96 years old. But now I see that two people who spoke in favor of changing that law, that ordinance, last week and saying, let's do it while they're alive, are two people whose names have been put up to have streets named after them. They didn't mention that at the time when they were speaking of it, but, you know, I found that out after. So I have to say, to do that would open the door to a lot of big issues. Everyone's going to have a family member or someone else, and they're going to want a street named after them. I mean, we won't even know what street we live on anymore if that happens. I mean, personally, I want the corner of Cisson Avenue and Warrenton Avenue to be named Goshdiggian Gardens, because that's where the Goshdiggians lived. This is, my mother, I will tell you right now, did as much for this city as any of these other people whose names are being proposed, but I wouldn't do that because I think it's kind of tacky. So I really want to speak against making that change. Like we do with United States postage stamps, let's keep it so that we honor the person as it is now, two years after their death, and then, you know, we can propose honoring them. We don't have to do it. But this needs to be seriously considered, because I want to know where I live. I don't want to get in a cab someday and say, take me to Weathersfield Avenue, and you'd say, do you mean Pumpkin Patch Road? Oh, no, there is no more Weathersfield Avenue. So, you know what? That's something that really does not need to change. Thank you.
Those in favor of item number four. In favor of item number four. Those opposed to item number four. Opposed to item number four. One more time. Those in favor of item number four. In favor. Those opposed to item number four. Those opposed. That item is officially closed. Item number five, ordinance amending Chapter 26, Article 2, Section 26-31, unlawful conduct generally of the municipal code. Those speaking in favor of item number five. In favor of item number five. Those speaking in opposition to item number five. Those speaking in favor of item number five. In favor. Those opposed. Going once, going twice. Opposed. That item is officially closed. And that concludes our agenda for the evening. Thank you all for joining us here tonight.